Welcome to the Canal Alliance San Rafael City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Stephanie McNally and I am the Advocacy and Policy Senior Manager at Canal Alliance. I will be moderating the candidate forum this evening. As a nonpartisan organization, Canal Alliance neither supports nor opposes any political party or candidate for public office. San Rafael has four city council members elected by district for four-year terms. The mission of the city of San Rafael is to enhance the quality of life and provide for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable environment in partnership with the community. Their vision for San Rafael is to be a vibrant economic and cultural center reflective of its diversity with unique and distinct neighborhoods in a beautiful natural environment, sustained by active and informed residents, and a responsible innovative local government. This forum will be recorded and shared after the event. Canal Alliance is not responsible for comments made by the public during this recording, although we will monitor them during the event. Candidates, please speak slowly for the interpreters translating the forum for our Spanish-speaking audience. Time for each answer is limited to three minutes to give each candidate an opportunity to respond to all questions asked during the forum. We ask that the candidates not pose questions to each other. We will begin with opening statements from each candidate. Candidates, you will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves to our audience this evening. Mica Jorenz Gulati, please begin our opening statements. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everybody, and hola muy buenas noches. Thank you very much for having me tonight and also for hosting this educational forum for our community. My name is Mica Jorenz Gulati and I'm running for San Rafael City Council in the newly-formed District One, which includes the Canal, Spinaque and Bay Point, southeast San Rafael parts of Lincoln, and also part of Red Heart, which is where I live. I am bicultural and bilingual and I have lived with my husband Ashwin in San Rafael since 1998, where we have raised our two children, now in college or actually trying to be, and they both attended our San Rafael schools, San Valley Davis and San Rafael High School. I'm a Spanish immigrant who came to this country in 1996, and my husband, who is also an immigrant from India, he came as a kid and grew up in Milvale. So, we used to visit his father, Canwal, his apartment in the canal every Sunday for the most amazing Indian food you can probably find here or in the world, and that's where I fell in love with San Rafael and we decided to do our life here and we have lived in San Rafael for 22 years. I have three passions: education, equity, and the environment. Currently, I'm the president of the San Rafael Board of Education and I've been on the board since 2015. I'm also an environmentalist, currently the executive director of Sliver Ranch, which is a local nonprofit dedicated to connect our children, all children, to nature. I'm also a former local business owner in downtown San Rafael, where I was very involved with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Improvement District. And some of the priorities that I have is really to support our local business community and our San Rafael families, especially during these hard times during COVID-19. Also, being proactive about the impacts of climate change is something that is happening, is here, and we really need to be proactive. Creating strong educational foundations for our youth, every child really needs to have the best education. And then just building bridges across cultures and neighborhoods. We have such a rich, you know, community. We really want to bring the best of all worlds and really support every family working together. So I really look forward to serving the city I love as the first council member in our newly-formed District One and also being the first Hispanic joining the San Rafael Council. So again, thank you so much for having us all tonight.
Thank you, Mica. John Gamblin, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Fernando, Stephanie, and the Canal Alliance for inviting us to and coordinating this very important community event. For the last six years, I've had the great privilege and honor to represent the residents of San Rafael as a member of the city council. During my tenure on the council, I have served on the Finance, Economic Development, Pension, Homeless Subcommittee, as well as the Countywide Community Development Block Grant Steering Committee, the City, County, and Public Schools Working Group. I've co-chaired the city cannabis policy group and I'm a member of the newly-formed Phase Two group focusing on public safety and the police in our community. On the personal side, I've been a resident of Marin County on and off since 1979. For the last 13 years, with my wife and family, we've called San Rafael and Terra Linda our home. I have over 30 years' experience in the financial services industry as an advisor and a certified financial planning professional. I've been actively involved in our community as a youth sports coach and a volunteer for many years. 2020 has been a really challenging year for all of us. San Rafael currently finds itself at a turning point, faced with an uncertain economic future brought on by the ever-changing way in which we conduct business, to the devastating impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And no community in our county has been harder hit and knows this better than yours. We must recognize that now is the time to have consistent and steady leadership at the council level. It is now more important than ever to have a city council who can come together with city management and staff to implement new and bold strategies which will guide us through these tough times. I'm the candidate who will work with you and for you to get it done, and I'm honored to have the support and endorsement of all my current council colleagues, Councilmember McCullough, Councilmember Bushy, Vice Mayor Collin, and Mayor Phillips, as well as former Mayor Alborra, and also outstanding organizations including the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, the Marin Builders Association, and the North Bay Leadership Council. I want to thank you again for this opportunity and I look forward to the rest of the evening.
Thank you, John. Rachel Kurtz, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Fernando. Thank you, Canal Alliance, for this opportunity tonight. I love the work I do on the San Rafael School Board, and now is the time to take my passion and commitment to the city council. There is so much work that needs to be done to repair our community. I have learned the importance of collaboration and making sure all voices are represented. I've learned about complex budgets, working with labor teams, and ensuring transparency of my decisions. Professionally, personally, and on the school board, I work under the principle that having goals and attainable deliverables is very important. I listen, I learn, and in some cases, I unlearn past understandings, and I turn my learnings into action. The problems facing our community today have only been amplified by the pandemic. I have been working on the issues of food insecurity, affordable housing, immigration rights, access to education for over 15 years. We have a lot of work still to be done. Those who know me say I have endless energy, and I do. That energy comes from knowing we still have a lot of work to do to repair our community, our world. I'm committed to the community. In March, I started working at our Beja Vista Food Bank. I've continued that work. I advocate for those who don't have a voice at the table. I'm responsive. I show up when needed, help complete immigration forms and DACA applications. I helped block the towing of cars in the canal years ago. I stand and fight for our community member Hugo Mejia when he was taken by ICE. And I'm focused on social equity and really the work that's needed to change public policy. I care about our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you so much. Greg Now, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Greg Now, 17-year member of the San Rafael School Board and active in the business community since 1983. We own a print shop in the canal and we, in fact, run the original Canal Alliance Board. My brother Derek Now sat on that first board. Now that we're in districts, we are running from the North San Rafael District, but we will be representing all of San Rafael. And I have a particular interest in equity in government towards the canal. For example, I think one of the first projects I'm going to be working on, because the transit center is going to be, there's going to be a decision soon on where it's located, and it's very important that the canal have access to the transit center and to our schools. So I would advocate, and in fact, the canal is the primary user of the transit center. So I would advocate for protected intersections at 14 locations on the way between the canal and the transit center. These are intersections that have curbed areas to prevent sharp turns. We just had another death right near the transit center on a left turn. I think those intersections should be protected. In the 2040 Master Plan, there's a call for a bridge over the canal. This will give access to our high school and the San Pedro School. There's always been pushback on the bridge concept. I support the bridge and I will advocate for a retractable bridge over the canal because we must have safe access for our children to be able to walk and ride, both to school and for adults in the canal to get to the new transit center when it's completed. I believe that the canal residents pretty much get the short shrift, broke most from their employers and from the county in general. And I believe that we should be doing more to protect residents from eviction. We should be doing more to try to keep rents down. And we should be urging the people that employ our employees, their employees that work in the canal, to grant more flexibility in their working hours. So we could advocate for sick time, for time to be away from work and still be compensated if you have a COVID infection. It's really extremely dangerous. Right now, we have an infection rate of 20% in the canal, and our businesses that utilize the people working in the canal must step up and take care of these people and help them keep their jobs and protect their families if there are infections in the family or in their building in particular. So I promise to work for the whole city, even though I'll be elected in North San Rafael. And I hope that you will talk to your friends that live in North San Rafael. We have significant communities up there of working people, and I would appreciate your help in getting me elected so I can continue to work with Mica. The council has only two people that are going to be there for sure from the last council. We have two retirements and Kate Collin is moving up to mayor if she wins. So it's important to have, and Mica is guaranteed a seat since she's already been elected de facto. Mike and I have worked together for over a decade on the school board advocating for people in the canal, advocating for cultural enrichment for Spanish learners, and I believe that if the both of us are again on the canal, I mean, on the city council, we'll be able to serve the interests of the canal and your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Welcome, candidates. My first home in Marin County was in the San Rafael Sun Valley neighborhood. While I no longer live in San Rafael, I work in San Rafael, the heart of the county, for a nonprofit organization that is a champion of immigrants. As we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, I think about my parents who emigrated to the US from Argentina a few months before I was born. The Hispanic community comes from many parts of the world that speak many variations of Spanish as well as indigenous languages. I was raised in an Argentinian household in this country and identify as a Latina. Before we begin tonight's forum, I would like to provide some high-level context on the issues and inequities that are facing, that are impacting the Latino community. 30% of San Rafael's population is Latino. The issues we are discussing this evening are directly impacting this community and the American dream that they brought with them to the US, just like my parents. According to the Race Counts website, Marin County ranks the first most racially disparate county in California. The pandemic has exacerbated the inequities in economic opportunity, health access, housing, and education, as reported by this website, as well as other recently published studies. As Omar Carrera, who runs Canal Alliance, notes, "Structural inequalities in the canal long predate the pandemic, but COVID has made them far worse." Local health officials are telling us that Latinos make up 16% of the population and account for over 70% of the COVID-19 cases in the county. Low-income Latinos are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19 because they often share homes with multiple families to afford skyrocketing rents. Unlike their wealthier counterparts who typically can work from home, many low-income Latinos work essential jobs in public spaces. Before the pandemic, San Rafael's essential workforce was spending 50% to 60% of their income on rent. Today, they are facing a crisis of mass evictions and displacement and other factors that contribute to this crisis. What do you see as the biggest challenge in addressing the impact of the pandemic on housing for low-income tenants? And how do you plan to support both tenants and landlords in San Rafael? John Gamblin, please begin response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you very much, Stephanie, and it is a really important question and one that obviously has been brought to the forefront in light of the COVID pandemic. But as you mentioned, it's been there for a long time and unfortunately has gone too long, being unnoticed, for those of us outside of the canal area. The biggest challenge that I think that we face here is that we can put, as policymakers, eviction moratoriums, payment forbearance, we can put all these into place, but there's going to be a time where that comes due. And if we don't think proactively and make bold choices and bold policy moves to address this, we're really just proverbially kicking the can down the road. Because if a person was spending 50% of their income to pay rent and they were working full-time prior to COVID, and now they may be fortunate enough to be working 50% of the time as we work through the different phases of reopening, there is absolutely no way that they can make that already high rent payment with 50% or less than their income. The past rent is accruing, and even though it might be turned over to a civil debt and not continue on the rent, it's still owed, and that's going to be a challenge for all of the tenants that are living there and facing this problem. But it's also a problem for the landlords. We have to remember that the folks that own these properties are providing a much-needed service to our community by providing housing, and they too have obligations, mortgages, payments, expenses that are not getting paid or having trouble being paid because the rental income that they're used to is not coming in. Like I said, it's going to take a bold policy choice. At a city level, it's challenging, but we can't give up just because we're at a city level. We can defer to the county and we can defer to the state and say, oh, it's their problem, the city can't handle this, but that's really not good enough. The city has to take a stand and we have to work with both the tenants and the landlords. We have to reach out to the lenders. We have to reach out to the banks to ask them for help, to maybe, you know, put funding at the end of their loans so that, or move the balance to the end of their loans so that they can pass that on to the tenants. And we have to make sure that if the landlords are getting assistance, the tenants are getting assistance. But we can't sit back and just wait for this pandemic to end. If we do that, we're going to be faced with an even stronger challenge and greater challenge. We have to be working at it now, now while we have these eviction moratoriums and foreclosure moratoriums in effect. You can't wait till those over and there's a number of people that'll be put out on the streets. It's just not fair and we need to address this now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next response will come from Rachel Kurtz. You have three minutes to share your answer.
This is a really critical issue and there has to be that level of urgency right now. We have some work that's already been put in place before renters' rights, just cause eviction, mandatory mediation, trying to improve apartment conditions, but that was all before the pandemic. Those issues are still front and center for us, and we need to make sure that, you know, we have the supports for our community. And it's our community. It's not the community down at the canal. It's our whole community, and we need to make sure that we have those protections in place. Legal representation, we need to ensure that's supported through the city, supported through the county and other agencies, that our community has the right level of legal representation. We need rent stabilization, and we need to prevent outside buyers from coming in because the community right now is going to be very impacted and the evictions are, right, we're right at the edge of that happening. And if we have a situation where we have a lot of outside buyers coming in, we're going to be in the situation like many areas in San Francisco, where the whole community gets gentrified, and that is very, very dangerous and will push out many who live in the community today, and we cannot have that happen. Our property owners, they'll need supports. They might need help legally as well, but the focus needs to be on our renters and it needs to be in the community that's most impacted through very high-density housing situations and this fear right now of eviction. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next response will come from Greg Now. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Hi. Yeah, it's a frustrating situation to look at what happens with our families in the canal area. Just as they finally got ahead enough to get into their own apartments, we witnessed all the massive buildings be sold, flipped over there at the top of their value, and rents went up $900 a month. And boom, right away, these families that had finally got a leg up, got their own place, are forced to double and triple up again or move to the East Bay and commute in Vallejo or Richmond. It's a situation where it's almost, I don't see how you can win. That cycle keeps repeating itself. The solution is to provide competition for these investors, and that's who they are. These are not mom-and-pop landlords. And that's through aggressive steps to create affordable housing. I've been working for affordable housing for decades now, and the attempts by the current council have been inadequate. They've been letting promised affordable housing courses be bought out by putting money into a slush fund that the city then raids to pay for other things other than housing. For example, your homeless coordinator funds are coming out of that slush fund that was supposed to be for housing. And now we're going back to a 10% affordable housing mix when it was at 20. 10% failed to meet the problem, so why would we go back and do something that has proven not to work? I believe in redevelopment agencies bringing them back, bringing them back as a combination of city and large employers funding them. Government did build housing until Brown, to balance the budget, eliminated redevelopment agencies, but that is the kind of what we need. That's the direction we need to go in to build large amounts of housing that is limited to affordable. There doesn't need to be any more subsidies for McMansions in Marin. And the whole thrust of this council is to provide incentives for people to build expensive housing if they build a few units of affordable housing. That's not a solution. There shouldn't be another incentive to build any more market-rate housing. They can build that on their own. We know that's wildly profitable. The only incentives government should do is to do 100% affordable and do that by them, you know, in partnerships but with a redevelopment agency model. And the major employers, the people that do not pay income tax like we do, that spend millions of dollars avoiding any responsibility, must be made to contribute to a fund, to fund redevelopment agencies so we can do infill housing in sufficient quantities that we get the market balanced again. Because right now, supply and demand favors large investors that John's very familiar with, and that's not going to help our people at all. So, you know, we have to just call it like it is and do real work for actual affordable housing. It can be done. It has been done in other areas, and all it takes is courage and leadership, and that's what I offer to bring to the council. And I know that Michael will be a great partner. We've discussed this, and we are together on the need for large amounts of affordable housing as the ultimate solution to this crisis among our working populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Before we go on to our final response from Mica Jorenz Gulati, I want to let everyone know that we are having some technical issues on our Spanish broadcast. We have audio coming through but not video, so please stay with us here if you're listening on the Spanish side of our broadcast to keep listening, and hopefully we'll get the video to you shortly. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. So, Mica, you've got three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you so much. I almost feel like I start speaking in Spanish as well very fast. So I have to tell you, this is a huge issue in our community. I am just so thrilled right now that we are all talking about it because, obviously, during COVID-19, this is affecting even more our racial and ethnic minority groups due to poverty and, you know, lack of healthcare access, especially our Latinx community in San Rafael. And I think we keep talking about the canal and the problems in the canal, but these problems, they affect us all as a community, not only the canal, but the entire San Rafael, the entire Marin County, because most of these people that they live in the canal, they are our essential workers. And we cannot really continue our business without these essential workers. So it is not just an issue of the canal. It's an issue that we have all to step up and really try to find a solution. We know about the issues with the housing and not only, you know, how reduced it is where you have to have several families living in one apartment, where they have inhumane conditions because they are scared to tell the landlord because they will be evicted. And now with COVID, we have all these, lots of cases of COVID because people, you know, if they don't have symptoms, they are still going to work although they know that they are positive because they need to feed their families, they need to pay the rent. So I really appreciate the county, Marin Community Foundation stepping up, all our nonprofits, and supporting, you know, delaying the evictions, but we are not really helping these families to survive. They are creating a huge debt that they are going to have to pay, and at the end of the day, if they cannot pay and they get evicted, where are they going to be? They are going to be in the streets. So I think we need to have our public, private sector, our entire county, and really stepping up and see, we definitely have more, we need more housing, and ideally, we can offer this housing for them, for our... And ideally, we can offer this housing for them, for our communities, not just to rent but also at some point to own as well. And everything that we experience, every issue in San Rafael, they are related to housing. The problems we have with education, you know, the problems with parking. So, I think we all have to step up again, not only the city but collaborate with our county and even at the federal level and figure out what solutions we can bring for these families. Again, they are our families and they are our neighbors, so it's really affecting us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. The city of San Rafael has been a leader in Marin County on addressing homelessness. Between 2017 and 2019, San Rafael saw a 30% decline in unsheltered homelessness and countywide there was a 28% decline in long-term chronic homelessness. Evictions are a leading cause of homelessness. Low-income tenants often do not know their legal rights and do not have access to legal representation in eviction hearings. If you live with an undocumented family member, you're even more vulnerable. What is your position on creating a service, a permanent service for access to legal assistance for low-income tenants in cases of landlord disputes? Furthermore, how would you make sure that the change is both systematic and sustainable? Rachel Kurtz, please begin the response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you. The issue of homelessness and, as you were saying, all these issues that we're talking about tonight all tie together. And we were just talking about potential of evictions, many of those families will become homeless if we do not have the supports in place. For the last 10, 11 years, I've been working on the issue of homelessness. It started with the RUS program of feeding our guests, our homeless in the community through Congregation Rhoda Shalom and the work of Marin Organizing Committee. Through that time, we would feed and we would allow to our guests to sleep at the synagogue. And it was a great thing and we would do it for a year and then we'd do it the next year and then it was 10 years. And we were doing that for 10 years for our homeless community and that was too long. And we know the answer to work on homelessness is to provide housing first. And that is the program that we have now turned to and with the support of the county and support of the city, we have an established program that supports our homeless, also addressing the mental health issues and wraparound services. This is really critical for everyone and will provide the legal supports as it's needed and also all the mental health services, the health and human services, medical services, any other things that we can provide, we have the wraparound services now to support our homeless community. And we've seen a lot of change. We also have partnership with our police department, with Lynn Murphy, who is a social worker, and her dog Blue, who will go and meet with the homeless and be, have that conversation and work with the chronic homeless in terms of providing those supports. So, we need to make sure that we continue this work and we continue providing the right level of housing, providing the facilities that can support a housing-first model so we can house our homeless. Because you can't work on all the other things affecting you unless you have a place to put your head down at night and feel safe and secure. So, I'm glad we're working on that program now. We need to do more and we need to be proactive in looking at if we're going to have a number of families evicted and people who are going to become homeless, we need to make sure that we have the supports in place to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next response will come from Greg Nell. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Yes, thanks. Well, the homeless situation is multifaceted and nobody has a solution for it. But, you know, we do have programs where we nibble around the edges and Homer Bound is really an outstanding example of that. But government has to cooperate with it and I see when they had competing proposals in Nevada for economic housing, which had twice the number of affordable units in their program, Nevada turned their back on that and went for a high-end townhome development with half the units. So, government really has to take a role in that. You know, San Francisco and others that are doing the housing-first model, they're buying, in Oakland, they're buying apartment buildings and SROs, multiple unit apartment buildings that have studio apartments. We don't have a source of housing like that in Marin where we can buy those. So, again, we have to be aggressive in actually developing actual housing in Marin to do that. Now, with the homeless issue, a big significant part of that, and I'm going to get to the eviction question later, but is mental health and addiction. And I co-founded and currently serve as co-chair of RX Safe Marin, which was formed to fight prescription drug abuse and the opioid crisis that's plaguing the nation. Before we had COVID, that was our major, our last major epidemic. And there's a tremendous amount of money that is out there. If we develop resources and have the leadership to go after those grants like we're doing at Alcohol Justice and at Marin County and with RX Safe Marin, because what we need to do is really ramp up available treatment for drug addiction and we have to ramp up mental health services. So, not everything becomes a police issue. And that is a tremendous need. I know how to get those funds, I know how to organize agencies in that area. And that will be a major concern of mine on the council is to develop more resources for mental health. Now, in terms of people learning their rights, I think Legal Aid of Marin does a fantastic job. They actually do, you know, advise quite a few people in terms of their rights. The problem is there is not a whole lot of rights. If you can't, you know, there is no right to not pay your rent, for example, but if you don't have the money, how are you going to pay it? So, Legal Aid does a great job and I do support the idea that Canal Alliance has put forth for institutionalizing the funding, make it a county-level funding to make sure there are enough attorneys and enough resources to meet the need and to have enough bilingual support. Because, you know, a lot of times it's a language barrier that you can't access the legal help that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next response will come from Micah Yorin's Gulati. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe the problem with homelessness is really more a consequence, especially around mental health and addiction, unemployment and around housing. And not everybody fits the same description under homelessness when, I think there is a stereotype, right? For example, we have students and families in our school district living in their cars because they just cannot afford a house to live. So, again, we go back to the issue with housing. It is extremely hard to keep a job or being a student when you don't have a place to live, when you don't have a place to take a shower, to have your meals or to study. COVID-19 is making it even worse. When people start losing their homes because they cannot pay the rent, then we are going to have that situation again, right? Where we'll have more homeless in the streets. And this issue affects San Rafael more as a central location where many of the services are provided than any other city in Marin County. But it shouldn't be an issue for just one city. We should find solutions in collaboration with, excuse me, with other agencies, including the County of Marin, the City of San Rafael and agencies providing services and also funding. You know, even at the state level, since this is not a unique problem to San Rafael, we definitely need more mental health services and more housing. There are already great agencies working to support our growing population and it really works. We just need more. We have the Downtown Street Team, amazing services that we are providing, but until we can, until we can offer more, again, more mental health support and more housing, this is a situation that is going to continue and even get, you know, get worse as you can probably experience in cities like San Francisco right now, where it's, you know, it's getting really bad. So, again, this is not just San Rafael. We need to collaborate and make sure that everybody understands that because we offer the central services here in San Rafael doesn't mean that it's only our issue. So, we need more engagement from other communities as well to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Our final response will come from John Gamblin. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. And obviously, all of these questions are very important and this one is extremely important. To address homelessness, one way is to try and prevent people from becoming homeless. And part of your question says is what would we do as a city or as a community to provide a permanent resource and permanent services so that tenants know their rights? I think that's a big challenge in our community that we have now is that people just don't understand the rights that they have when it comes to their rental agreements. And they might be afraid, they don't, as others have mentioned, they don't want to bring this topic up with their landlord for fear of getting evicted for some other reason. But if we don't address this piece, when the eviction moratoriums and the foreclosure moratoriums are over, the homelessness will expand. All the great efforts that we've done over the last years, you know, led by our homeless director, homelessness director, Andrew Henning, you know, the city of San Rafael does not have its own Health and Human Services budget, but we know that this is an important issue and thus we've allocated funds to support this by reaching out to the Downtown Streets Team, by bringing a person with the talent of Andrew Henning on staff. And they've done such a great job, not only with the city but coordinating with the rest of the county. But as I said, our goal is to prevent homelessness. We've done a good job of reducing it. If we don't address this issue right now, while we have eviction moratoriums in place, while we have foreclosure moratoriums in place, the issue of homelessness is going to be thrust upon the least of us that can afford it. So, as a current council member, we have supported mandatory mediation and just cause eviction ordinances, we've put those in place. We can do more. We can fund and like we've done with the mobile showers for the homeless, we can do as a community of San Rafael and the rest of the communities and put together a fund to permanently, to permanently fund a resource, a legal resource for residents on the verge of homelessness by the threat of eviction. I strongly support that, it's needed in the community, everybody needs to know their rights and they need to be supported. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. In partnership with Stephanie Hefner, the executive director of Legal Aid of Marin, and Chandra Alexander, chief executive officer at Community Action Marin, Omar Carrera, chief executive officer at Canal Alliance, wrote an urgent letter to local elected officials calling for a strong and much-needed response to the devastating effects the pandemic continues to have on Latinos in Marin County and in California. We shared a copy of this letter with the panel of candidates prior to this event. The letter presented a series of draft recommendations focused on health, housing and local businesses as a starting point for an immediate collective impact response to short-term pandemic recovery and long-term strategic planning for stability. What is your position on the recommendations from the Policy Task Force? How will you address the impact to the low-income workforce and the business community as we navigate the effects of the pandemic and plan for recovery? Greg Nell, please begin the response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Well, I, you know, I've talked a lot with Omar about the issues, you know, when he originally wrote the thing and I was addressing that in my opening comments in that I don't feel that the employers in San Rafael are supporting these vital workers that happen to live in this area and in other areas of San Rafael with smaller numbers to support them in what they need. So, I support completely the recommendations that Omar and Stephanie have done and would work once I'm on the Canal to continue the work that I've been doing with Omar and with Alcohol Justice in the Canal and working for all of those, all of those recommendations that they made. I just, I support it and I don't have anything more on it. I think they covered it pretty well exactly what the proposal should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next response will come from Micah Yorin's Gulati. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm so happy that you put together this report and sent it to all the elected officials because I think you're right on the dot. And there are like many things that we need to address. It's a very complex situation and I think we really need to bring together again different entities and the community to support the situation that we have. I really believe that we need to develop an economic plan for San Rafael and I know that this is something that Kate Cullen has been mentioning for a while. The economic response for COVID-19 has really focused in the short-term relief with the PPP loans for our small businesses and that has really helped like short-term. But as we are looking at COVID-19 expanding, what's going to happen with these businesses? They are, you know, I personally, at my, you know, my work at the Sliver Ranch, we receive a PPP loan that allows us to survive for eight weeks. So, then we could actually host summer camp and now we are doing just okay. But what's going to happen if we continue with the COVID-19? So, I think we need to, again, partner together to put more pressure on the federal and the state government to continue this support. In addition to that, we need a long-term economic plan to stimulate our local economy, especially the small businesses that they are hiring our essential workers as well. And I think we need to attract more new small businesses downtown. It really breaks my heart to see so many storefronts empty. And, you know, also we need to promote our current businesses through maybe a communication campaign. We have amazing jewels in our community like Weaver's Coffee, EO. San Rafael provides 60% of the sales tax for the city. So, we want to make sure that they are recognized, valued and supported. And our local businesses can really make a difference in hiring local workforce to improve our economy. And so, I believe that we really have to help with that. And again, we do need more housing, absolutely. And that is not an easy issue, but I think if we all come together, we can start, we have seen in other communities that it's working out, so it is possible. So, and I really look forward to collaborating to not just having a plan but start taking actions to see the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Our next response will come from John Gamblin. You have minutes to share your answer.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I agree that the letter that we received from Omar as a council member, I was one of the ones that was addressed to that letter, it was eye-opening to me and I actually, you know, I'm ashamed that we didn't act sooner on this because typically with most government, it's very reactive and slowly reactive and it needs to be more proactive. And it's never more apparent than what's happening right now with the COVID pandemic, how we have been very reactive to this situation. So, the first thing is, is that we've got to take these, you know, ideas and suggestions that Omar and the rest of the folks put forward in their letter to us and really be proactive and make the changes that we need to. I think the city of San Rafael, in fact, I know the city of San Rafael has done a great job behind the scenes. know the City of Santa Fel has done a great job behind the scenes. We moved into action when we declared a city state of emergency back in early March. We have rallied employees and team members and high level staff to work with the community. When we talk about business, our business development director, Daniela Leary, and her staff has been actively involved in the community for the entirety of the pandemic and its shelter in place. We average close to 20 visits a week with the businesses, helping them get their businesses ready to reopen when the, when the levels change so that they can reopen. We help them with the PPP loans. We help them with the setting up their, their restaurants, their retail establishments, to be able to accept customers once they're able to do that, making sure that they're not going to get shut down again. We're following up with them. We're providing them with those services, and that needs to continue. And because if we think that this is the last time that this is going to have an effect on the city, or the state, or the nation, we're kidding ourselves. This is, this is very eye open to us, and we need to take the opportunity that's in front of us to act and put in forth procedures and policies so that we can be ready for this, address this, and anything that happens in the future. That's going to come with a need for funding. And as city council members, while we have a limited budget and it's addressed to a number of things, we need to advocate with our state and national leaders to get the funding where it's needed most, and that's at the local level. It tends to come from the federal government, sit at the state level, and not work its way down to the locals where it's absolutely needed. And we need to do a better job of working with our assembly members, our state senators, our federal senators and congress members to get that money where it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our final response will come from Rachel Kurtz. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Great, thank you. I appreciated reading the letters, but I kept going back and looking at the dates. So the first one was August 14. And I was like, okay, fine. That was already months after we'd been in a pandemic situation for months. And then the next letter was September 4. And then I was actually curious. So the proposal is a policy task force. So where is this policy task force? Where, what is the information on it? Who's on it? What's happening? I love the idea of task force. But right now, we need an emergency, right? We've been talking about that tonight. And no one should be surprised by these letters. I believe Omar Carrera and many in the community could have written these letters 10 years ago. So we can't look to state. We can't look to federal funding. I mean, we're going to be tapped out at every level. And we really need to look internally to ourselves and see what we need to do. Businesses, first and foremost, let me start there. First and foremost, we're still in the pandemic, right? So we need to ensure there's available testing for all. And we need to monitor, hopefully, fingers crossed, we're going to have a viable and reliable vaccine. But what you need to, when that vaccine comes, we need to plan to be able to distribute it to the community. And it shouldn't be dependent on your healthcare and your insurance. Everyone's going to need that vaccine, and we should be thinking about that today. We need to make sure our businesses stay afloat and begin recovery during this very, very precarious time and help them. We might be looking another 12 months, 18 months. We don't know exactly. And we need to be working with everyone around those very, very important needs right now. Our employers, helping those employers provide sick leave. When somebody's testing positive right now, they're not quarantining because they can't because they don't have sick leave. They are going back out and working, and we know then further spreading the virus to the community. And they have to do that because they have to earn some level of income. So we need to help our businesses to support our employees. We need to make sure there's childcare for our families. So if they do need to go out and work, they have support for their children. So these are all things that go into play. Those letters were great. Everything laid out in them is exactly what we need to be talking about. And this should be setting our roadmap for the city council and for the county. And we need to be working these today, not waiting for the state and not waiting for federal and not waiting for the end of the election. So this is what has to happen right now. So I really, I'm so happy to see the letters. I'm also sad to see the letters. So but thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. So we're going to wrap it up for this evening. We want to thank Desire to Inspire for providing innovative technology. There's Trevor, and expertise enabling us to share this event live in two languages simultaneously. Thank you, Maria Gomez Contreras, for providing simultaneous interpretation in Spanish for this event. Thank you, candidates, for joining us this evening and sharing your vision and perspectives. You will each have one minute for a brief closing statement. Micah Jorins Gulati, please begin the statements. You have a minute.
Thank you. I love living in San Rafael. This is such a vibrant community. And but in our community also, we are facing grave challenges. But there are also incredible possibilities ahead. As a parent, the president of the San Rafael Board of Education and the executive director of a local nonprofit dedicated to connect children to nature, I know that our only successful path forward is going to require courage, compassion, fearlessness, and flexibility as well. As a fearless advocate for every family and a champion for our youth, and a former small business owner, I see this moment as an opportunity to really learn from each other, understand new perspectives, and celebrate our richness. I really look forward to collaborating with the public, private, and the nonprofit sectors, and see how together we can, you know, we can work together to so everybody in our community can actually thrive. And I look forward to serving the city, again, that I love, in the newly formed district one. So thank you so much for this opportunity, Trevor, Stephanie, and everybody at Canal Alliance, for educating our community in the elected officials. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Micah. John Gamblin, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. And thank you to everyone at the Canal Alliance, Fernando, Trevor, for putting this together. It's been, it's been an amazing opportunity for all of us to answer questions, to hear the concerns of the community, and let you know what, how we would address those. We were only able to talk about three questions, and there are so many issues that are facing Santa Fel as a whole and the canal community. And my goal over the last six years is to be an active listener, to work with those, you know, who have questions, to help them out, to just be there for the citizens of Santa Fel. If I'm fortunate enough to get reelected to the council for another four years, I'm going to redouble my efforts on that because it is very important to me to be available to all of our constituents. You know, we are running for the District Four, which is in northern Santa Fel, but we do represent the entirety of Santa Fel. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that I am open to a conversation, to a call, to an email at any time. Again, I thank everybody for the opportunity. And just remember, register to vote, get out there and vote. Every vote counts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Rachel Kurtz, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
Thank you. And thank you for this evening and for this conversation. But let's be clear and honest. We use a lot of phrases these days to describe the inequities in our community. Digital divide, affordable housing, achievement gap. Too many times, these are really glossy. They might be accurate, but they're a bit glossy. We really need to focus on the urgency. And those terms sometimes take away that urgency. And we need to focus on what's happening in our community today and get to work on what needs to be fixed. If one area of our community is struggling, every corner of our community is struggling. Over the last 15 years, I have seen and heard the stories from our community. I'm out in the community all the time. I've listened to these stories. I've seen the faces of the parents picking up food at the food bank lines. And I've learned from these stories, and I know we need to do more, and I know we can do more. More than data, research, or analysis, it is the impact of these stories that makes me want to work on the problems impacting our community. I love the work on the school board. We need to take that work that I do there, bring it up to the city level, and have people at every level of our government in our city be addressing these issues. Strong, direct, honest, quickly. And that's me. I'm endorsed by Vice Mayor Kate Cullen, my fellow trustee Natu Tua Tagaloa, and the Marin Women's PAC, and many, many members of District Four. And I'm excited to do this work and for San Rafael and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Greg Nell, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
Thanks. I want to encourage everybody to work for me and help elect me. The question is who from District Four is going to be able to work best with this council? John's been on there for six years and has nothing that he can point to that he's done for your community. He did vote to let the strand off their affordable housing component. And he was the only vote against the north-south greenway linking the canal to downtown, that path that I was discussing to you. I'm the only person that has done the work and have the accomplishments, which is why I'm the only one endorsed by the Sierra Club, the Building Trades Council, the Labor Council, the firefighters, the Democratic Party, the Young Democrats of Marin. Every significant group is endorsing me because they have seen the work that I have done. Rachel's been there listening quite a bit, but she voted to fire 150 of our black and brown classified employees, those instructional assistants that help your children in school. And she's simply not qualified. John has had a chance, never been on the ballot, never elected, but he's had a chance on the council. He's done nothing. It's time for me to step in there and exhibit the leadership and the work that I have done and what I can do for the city. And that's why I have the support of every significant member of the coalition that's behind your community here in the canal.
Thank you, Greg. A reminder that to support any of these candidates, you need to be registered to vote. You can register to vote on, you can register online to vote in the upcoming election at canalalliance.org. And we can help you register if you need assistance. So please reach out to us at Canal Alliance. Also, please join us tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM for Canal Alliance's San Rafael mayoral candidate forum, where we will be discussing a lot of these same issues for the two candidates running for mayor in San Rafael. This, the recording of this event will be shared on the Canal Alliance Facebook page and website. Enjoy the rest of your evening and thank you so much for attending this evening and being a part of this candidate forum. Good night, everyone.